I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on our agenda this evening is the Sedgwick-Bethel corridor study and presentations. Mr. Bond?
Yes, so this is our second in a series of scheduled meetings to update the council on where we're at.
On a slide on mic just a little closer to you.
This is the second of our council briefings that are scheduled as part of our scope of work for the Bethel and Sedgwick corridor study, and we have Elizabeth Luton and Eric Johnson from SCJ Alliance here to update us on where we're at with this project, and I'd like to invite them to come sit up at the table here. And I will turn the mic over to them.
Thank you, Nick. So I'm Eric, this is Elizabeth, in case you hadn't already deduced that. We wanted to kind of give you an update tonight and give you an idea of some of the challenges and constraints of the corridors. One of the things that I've learned as a transportation engineer when people find out that's what I do, the first thing they say is, oh, I've got an intersection near my house, or I've got this street, and they all have a transportation project. And then the next thing they say is, what they need to do is this. So not only do they have a problem, but they already know what the solution is. And we've had a lot of that on this project, as we've talked to the community, talked to interested stakeholders, everybody knows what needs to be done, and not everybody's idea is the same. So we've been working through some of that, looking at the analysis and looking at feasibility, and we're going to kind of walk you through some of those constraints that are going to really define the alternatives that we bring forward in the near future. We aren't to that point yet where we're going to show you the pretty pictures of this is what it could be, because we've still got a big public outreach phase coming up here in the next couple of months, so we'll be doing a lot of that as we get into this. But let me talk about the project scope a little bit. We've got two corridors, as you're well aware, and the reason I'm going to mention that here is that they're very different in a number of ways. The Bethel corridor, you know, is owned by the city, it's a city facility, versus Sedgwick, which is technically a Washdott facility, so there's ownership differences and things that each of the owners would do differently. Washdott is focused on moving traffic through, and so when we're looking at solutions that work for them, that's really their priority, where the city may have different set of priorities that may include more economic development, access, and things like that, circulation. The other thing is the nature of the corridors. One, you know, goes for, well, the Bethel corridor goes up into this part of town and connects a lot of residential areas, as well as the commercial up and down the corridor, but Sedgwick is a key connector between Highway 16 and the ferry on the other end, so there's a lot of pass-through traffic there. Less access issues, although that's becoming more of an issue as some of the undeveloped properties start to develop. So there are key differences there, and that will come out in our discussion tonight, we'll see some of these things. So some of the solutions that might make sense on Bethel might not be quite as effective on Sedgwick and vice versa. So I think what you're going to see as this project moves forward is some very specific strategies at specific locations. And while I say that, that there might be specific locations that need these things, we're trying to look cohesively at the entire project in both corridors and make sure that it flows nicely together, and some of that comes into play too, because if you do roundabouts, they work well together, you do signals, they work well together, when you start mixing and matching, they don't always work as well together. And so a lot of that comes into play. There are other issues like making it very walkable, making it feel like a neighborhood center, and those types of solutions often run counter to the cross or the flow of traffic through the area. So again, what might work on Bethel might make sense there and doesn't work as well on Sedgwick. So we'll get to those details as we work through this, and we're going to touch on a lot of that here tonight. You can see the discussion topics here. We've broken out our presentation on these topical areas, but as we talk through them, I want you to keep in mind that all of these things interplay, they interact with each other, and so as we're looking at this, we're going to take a holistic look and make sure that each of these things is considered in light with the others, and I think that'll come out in what Elizabeth shares with us and in the discussion that follows. So I'm going to let her walk us through the next few slides. Our goal is to kind of move pretty quickly through these, there's a lot of information, but if we can move through them and give you kind of the summary, then you'll know what's in the presentation, and then we'll have time to go back and talk about it in more detail once you kind of see what we've got for you. So feel free to interrupt with questions in the meantime, despite that, but really our goal is to give you enough time at the end to dive in a little deeper. And with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
Yeah, thank you for having us. So, is this on? You can hear me right? So like Eric said, these different topics all interplay, so I'm going to go through them in order, because you have to talk about things in an order, but that doesn't mean that, you know, one has priority over the other. Each of these affects another piece of the corridor, so hopefully that will come out in our discussion, but for purposes of presenting them to you, we're going to go through them in this order. Firstly, we have noticed through, or we've discovered through the process, that there are parcels that were purchased as a part of the Bethel corridor project when it was a county project for this same purpose, and during the acquisition process, it wasn't handled quite correctly, and we can't just purchase those parcels from the county. We need to think about how that, what the mechanism is for doing that, if we can, and if not, what our alternatives are. This issue affects some key pieces of the Bethel corridor. You'll see 1, 2, 3, and 4, the one being Lincoln and Lundberg Roundabout, so part of the proposal is to realign that intersection so that there's a roundabout at Lincoln and Lundberg, and there's a parcel that is now owned by the county there that the new road would be going through. Number 2 is the Valier Court Connector, so that's creating this kind of alternative grid network or aside access to the Bethel-Lund intersection, which is very congested, and to create that connector, it would be also going through one of the county parcels. 3 is what was purchased most likely for stormwater use and retention area would, and would, on the frontage side, require some right-of-way, and that's also a county, and then the Salmonberry Intersection. If we increase the footprint of that intersection, if we do a roundabout or a larger intersection there, it would be on that southeast corner as a county parcel.
That number 3, is that the property that's flooding?
No.
No, it's down. It's far.
Is it Farma Jones?
Probably just on the other side of the Bethel Tavern, it's probably that lot, I think.
Oh. Yeah. It's this one.
That's what I'm guessing that that is, yeah.
So that's something to keep in mind, that this is kind of separate of the other issues we were talking about, this is kind of something we need to figure out on the side and think about strategically. So the other things are all kind of elements of each of the corridor projects that we're going to have to kind of make decisions about, and we'd love to hear input on any and all of them. So in terms of Bethel, there's the street character question. We've done some traffic analysis, and we found that it can operate as a three-lane profile. It makes during the peak hour and the PM, it might be a little, there might be longer queues, there might be some congestion, I mean, most likely there will be, but the alternative is a five-lane profile, so you're adding lanes to kind of serve that peak hour, but you're also creating very different street feel. So under a three-lane profile, it'd be a much more walkable street, the street would be narrower, crossings would be shorter, it would require less right-of-way acquisition, smaller stormwater footprint, but you would have those longer vehicle queues during the peak hour and might require more aggressive development of that side street network that we were talking, like the Valier Connector. If you have those alternate routes, then it won't become such a problem on Bethel, but if you don't, then it could become quite a problem.
Right, this is probably your, from a legislative direction to staff, this is probably your biggest challenge, is determine, is to give direction as to how you want to handle those peak hours. You know, do you want to, in a sense, create a larger project to have the level of service for those peak hours more palatable, but the consequence of that being a much larger project, expensive project, and having a more Wheaton Way kind of like feel, or you have some alternatives that maybe deal with that, but you go to the more complete street, has all the benefits of that, where, but you'll still have some PMP peak level of service issues, and, you know, so I think that's probably one of the main things we won't want to, at some point, address.
And is it possible that, you know, in those areas leading up to the major intersections, that it's five-lane potentially there, and it tapers to two in between, it points between Lund and Sedgwick?
Definitely, that would be what it would have to, to accommodate the traffic, you'd have to have a wider or larger footprint at the intersections, but Lund is pretty much built out, Sedgwick is pretty much built out, so...
So does it make sense to, I mean, if, from Salmonberry to Lund is maybe four lanes because of Walmart and all of that that's already there, but maybe it's not in other places, I don't know.
Yeah, that's an option.
Do we have any idea what's, where the traffic is coming from and where they're going to?
And it's a heavy commute flow going northbound on Bethel during the PM peak and southbound during the AM peak.
My curiosity is commuting from Mark downtown, or are you going out to Sedgwick or going beyond, or do we know?
We do know, have an idea. It's a forecast of, you know, the horizon, I don't have it in front of me.
I just don't see any major employment centers along Bethel, nor do I see any major housing developments along Bethel, so I'm struggling to figure out where this commute is coming from and going to. I appreciate there's a lot of cars there, but I don't have a clue.
So the forecasting involved some of the land use changes, and maybe Nick can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah. So I think what we set up is two scenarios, one of them was our current land use scenario, and the second was looking at, like, the amendments that were passed as part of the 2017 comp plan amendments to increase things. So it's based on the capacity of the land, not based on the existing residential land use. So it's what theoretically can happen as the corridor develops. So we're forecasting based on what will eventually happen, not based on current conditions.
So the peak hour congestion that we see today is just the start of the discussion. We're finding based on land use projections or proposals could exacerbate what we're seeing today.
Yeah, everything we're doing is a 20-year, I think it's a 2040 technically forecast, so that's what we're looking at, not just today, but just going out there today, you can already see that there's an issue traffic-wise. It is hard, though, to take today's traffic and project that without all the improvements, so that's why we do the traffic modeling, because it's unfair to say, well, this is terrible, and then, because I think it's a valid point for people to say, well, it wouldn't be if you added turn lanes here and here or a roundabout here. Say, well, that's true, but then we have to add more traffic that would arrive by the time we do that, and so we try to keep it all consistent, so we have the right street network built with the right traffic volumes on it, as far as we can tell for the 2040 horizon.
My curiosity is, are we going to do Tremont, and we're thinking Tremont, a four-lane road from Highway 16 to Bethel, is that going to add more?
So the forecast includes all of the improvements that are identified in your tip, and that is one of them. So the model has been calibrated to redistribute traffic based on those improvements.
Right, we use, remember, TSI just updated our transportation model, and so they are a subconsultant with Jay Cordell, so they're running the model along with working with the development, community development office on projected land use. And you're right, there are, there are a lot of pass-throughs through that corridor, but there will also be the redevelopment, probably less pass-throughs, so, you know.
Part of my curiosity is if we were to make improvements, just as an example, on 160, Sedgwick from 16 would that pull traffic off of Bethel and make it more tracky, but without knowing where cars are coming from or going to, it's hard to say.
The model does do that, yeah, so things do get reassigned, and we often call that kind of a latent demand. There's this demand to use a facility, but if the facility's not there, we find this actually on 405. They can't build their way out of the congestion on 405, because more people want to use 405 than do today because of the congestion. So when you widen it, it just fills up instantly, because those people already want it to use it, and you'll have some of that going on here.
Building a day will come.
But, I mean, your future, and this is kind of getting ahead of ourselves, the future of these kinds of more urban corridors is that you'll start looking at trade-offs in your level of service, and the city recognized that. We've been talking to Mark and Nick about that, about level of service on Bethel. You can't have a level of service C 20 years from now as your standard. It's going to be D, I think it's a D now, but at some point, you're going to have to do what we often call strategic or strategy corridors, where you start accepting something like an E or an F, because you don't want it to just get wider and wider, you don't want to put seven lanes in. So you have a policy decision, and I think you've actually got locations where you've already made a policy decision that this is as wide as we're going, and we're going to have to make other changes, you know, more mass transit and more bike lanes, and it becomes more urban.
One more comment, then I'll shut up for a while, and listen, and that's just going along, what you're suggesting, is that I recently had an opinion, I've got with the Secretary of Transportation, and I think we've all heard his position, is we just can't build our way out of congestion, it's a $40 billion, I think it's way for that on the I-5 corridor, so his position is to use what we have more efficiently, and sure that has a whole list of things to make it more efficient, but kind of along the same line.
So, yeah, this is the first of the discussion topics, and it's related to all the other ones, and it sounds like you guys, I mean, I think what we're looking for is kind of an idea of what the character of Bethel you envision seeing, and how we can best meet that based on the profile. And then intersection control on Bethel is another topic to consider. We've done the analysis for, again, the forecasted volumes, and at the Lincoln-Lundberg roundabout that we, our intersection that we proposed, that our roundabout is what seems to work best there. There already are signals at Lund and Walmart and Sedgwick, and there's also been a signal at Blueberry installed, or, you know, as a part of a mitigation, but we wanted to make sure that a signal in the long run was the right decision, so we looked at the control at Salmonberry and at Blueberry, and a signal or a roundabout would both work at those locations. So it's really a question of what kind of, you know, intersections do we want on Bethel, what are the trade-offs, and some of the things that we've been thinking about are traffic operations. In the short term, maybe a roundabout works better, but in the long run, a signal might work better. So you can't really base a decision on that necessarily, and we have to think about the intersection footprint, how much right-of-way it's going to take up. It can solve some alignment issues, like at Salmonberry, the intersection's not quite aligned, so like a roundabout could be really helpful in kind of making that a safer intersection. It also could affect your access management approach. If we don't allow left turns onto and off of Bethel, then roundabouts provide a much easier way to give U-turns at the intersection, so that people can get back to their, where their desired location is. If we do signals, you're going to have to increase the size of the intersections, but they can make those U-turns. We can use bus stops as an, sometimes you can use a bus pullout as a way to accommodate a U-turn, so that's another question to think about, but we've talked to kids at Transit, and they, it's kind of up to the cities to decide whether they want pullouts or not have pullouts. They prefer not to have pullouts on busy corridors, because it's very hard to get back into traffic, but if it's three-lane profile and the bus is going to be stopping traffic, and the city doesn't want that, then they're also open to the idea of having pullouts.
And building and paying for them too, right?
They pay for the shelter.
We'll have to bring that up to the board.
Another consideration is safety, certain roundabouts have been shown to be much safer in terms of high injury or fatal crashes. Pedestrians can be accommodated, but if it's a multi-lane roundabout, then pedestrians sometimes don't, it's a little bit more tricky to make them safe for pedestrians or bicycles. And then, as Eric mentioned, the consistency of the corridor, if it's signal, signal roundabout, signal roundabout, signal, it's a little bit confusing for drivers, but, you know, if you kind of get a sense of what the corridor is all about, and you might want to do all signals on Bethel, as opposed to mixing it up. The access management is another question on Bethel. There's a lot of properties, and currently, there's kind of no access control, if left turns allowed. So one option is full access, not limiting access. We do, we would provide a left turn, two-way left turn lane, as opposed to what it is now, which is, you know, just a center line, which would help alleviate some of the congestion involved with turning, and help, you know, clear up movements and make it safer for people to make their left turns, but it would, you know, it would, it could be a safety concern in the future. The other option is partial limited access of medians, so you could choose a portion, like if we wanted to do roundabouts at Salmonberry and Blueberry and create kind of, that would be your kind of downtown little area that feels more like a walkable neighborhood, you know, change that section, but the rest of it is full access, you could, that's an option too. Or you could do completely limited access for the whole corridor. That, again, is kind of a little bit of a constraint, if you don't have a very built-out grid network adjacent to the main corridor, if you don't have side streets that people can use to access properties or truck traffic, especially freight, you can't make U-turns sometimes at intersections, limited access might be difficult on this corridor. On Sedgwick, it's a little more straightforward. We, the proposal would be to have limited access between the off-ramps and on-ramps all the way to what is a new proposed roundabout at, a new intersection between Geiger and Ramsey, and so there would be, you know, a median all along that section, and everything would be right in, right out in between there. The queues for the south, the northbound right turn, or sorry, northbound left turn onto Bethel are pretty long, and if you have a three-lane section on Bethel, like we talked about, you can't accommodate a double left there, you'd have to have a single left going on to Bethel, and those queues can be very long, so we wouldn't, we'd want to think about how to deal with Ramsey, if we can limit access on Ramsey partially, not allow left turns out of Ramsey onto Sedgwick, that could be an option, or completely limit access to right in, right out there as well.
Does limited access help with traffic flow?
It does.
It does?
Yeah, well, you don't have people trying to navigate those turns, you know, everyone's going straight or making a U-turn, so there's no one, even with a center turn lane, you still have people trying to make a left out, which can, which can cause issues. It's also much safer, obviously.
So if you wanted to have double left turns, then you would have to widen Bethel's intersection, right? And that's an example where you could go a fourth lane?
Yeah, so that would be, that would be where these kind of, these all kind of tie together. If you want to accommodate double lefts onto Bethel, you would have to accommodate at least for a portion of that section of Bethel, those two lanes of traffic on the receiving side.
And we've talked about Bethel, Sedgwick being two lanes each direction, and then tapering, so that you could accommodate that U-turn, or then that means that from Bethel, from Sedgwick up to, like, Blueberry, you'd have some sort of, you know, additional lanes and then tapering down, so.
It is, it seems pretty clear that Bethel will be a five-lane profile, or, sorry, Sedgwick will be a five-lane profile in the future. The traffic is heavy enough, it's a state route, and access to the ferry is only going to get higher as the, you know, high-speed ferry service and goes in, and so that seems to be the direction that Sedgwick is heading.
So I have a question, it's a little off-topic, but sort of pulling out the crystal ball and understanding, well, my question is pulling out the crystal ball, what would it look like for the 16 and Bethel interchange at some point in the future? What would that do to help us? And is that even on the horizon at this point? Or you're talking about the off-ramp only? Yeah. Right now, I think the SR16 corridor, they may not be elected right, so right now it's a strategy, and so how it gets from a strategy to a school project, there's some magic that happens, that is what we're accommodating in this study is, in our model, we're looking at, that doesn't happen or it does happen, and if it does happen, that obviously changes the characteristic of Bethel-Sedgwick considerably.
Are you talking about moving, or an additional off-ramp at Light?
If there's at Bell Meyer later, an off-ramp only, if that project became a project that the state takes on similar to, we know that the interchange of Sedgwick and 16 is level of service terrible, and it's going to need to be modified with compact roundabouts or something.
Did, did the session that we sat in with the Highway 16 study, didn't you?
The session that we sat in, that DOT put on with the Highway 16 study, didn't they indicate that that was one of their worst intersections?
It was the worst intersection.
Yeah, it is, so it's high on the list of their concerns, yeah.
It was a double a 31% efficiency rating, PMP in the later horizon study, so we know that it's going to have, and some of those have to be addressed by the state, and so as part of our study, we're just looking at those potentials, because again, if there was a off-ramp only at Bell Meyer, you would see a drastic change in traffic flow at Sedgwick and 16.
There was also...
Or Sedgwick and Bethel.
It was also surprising to me, but the Tremont intersection was also very high on the list.
It was the second lowest.
Yeah, they were both...
Is that left turn primarily coming westbound to, well, it's west, it's actually west.
Evening trip, making a left turn to get a...
Go from Tacoma to McCormick.
Yeah.
And that's, and there's actually a project that seems to be dying right now in the city of Birmingham, that they were actually required a mitigation to put a compact roundabout there, Ridge.
Sinclair Ridge.
Sinclair Ridge, but I'm not sure what's happening.
Is there a footprint big enough on Bethel to consider a roundabout there to move traffic or not? Built-out intersection and...
You're talking about Bethel and Sedgwick?
That is my question, if you're talking about making Bethel and Sedgwick a five-lane, you're going to have to buy more right-of-way, I assume, and with the additional right-of-way that you're going to buy to make the five-lane, would that sufficient to a roundabout?
I'm going to buy three gas stations.
Well, I could put five-lane in there with three gas stations.
Right.
If you're going to buy the right-of-way, it's going to be expensive than the choices which require more right-of-way, a roundabout or five lanes on Bethel or Sedgwick. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question, and we haven't gotten to that level of detail there.
My other question is, you know, not wanting to design it here at the table, but I'm curious how the off-ramp at Bethel, although everything I've been a part of has been for northbound 16 to right off onto Bethel, but if anything... sixteen to right off onto Bethel, but if anything other than that is going to be pretty challenging. So if anyone was coming, uh, southbound on sixteen, they wouldn't be able to get off there. So they're still going to be required to get off on Sedgwick. So you're only taking partial load off of Sedgwick.
It's, it's that.
And freight traffic.
That, that suggestion that came out of the technical advisory group was really just dealing with that PMP. People coming back from Pierce County.
But when I remember the discussion, the largest peak probably north of Burden was really more devoted towards Birmingham and the shipyard. Not that big of a deal for people coming from Tacoma. It should get hurt. South then to Tacoma was a big deal.
Right. There, there are just other factors. There are people that want annex in that area. So there's some other political factors for that as well. It's not strictly transportation driving.
I was just going to, to note that one of the, the advantages of having these roundabouts is to make sure that we can do the median, the access control. And Sedgwick, it, it works great as we kind of, um, are starting earlier in the process before all these pro, projects have gone in, all the parcels are developed along there. We don't have an expectation that everybody's got a driveway with full access. So, um, that's another advantage of getting this kind of a, a design footprint established now before all that happens. So people know what to expect. Um, Bethel, it'll be a little more of a challenge. The, on, on the upside in Bethel is that people know it's a problem today. So I think maybe they're hoping to some, some sort of a solution. Um, but, so it, it might vary. And, um, we can talk about that a little bit more about, um, I, I think we were getting to some of the points that we were making earlier here in, in some of your questions where you said, you know, if we have a double left at Bethel and Sedgwick, then we have to receive those two turns. Um, but that kind of comes back to that point where we needed to widen anyway to allow U-turns. So as you start seeing some of these factors play out, you realize that it leads you to certain sort of design treatments that make sense for more than one reason.
I was actually intrigued by your limited access roundabout concept, where you can make U-turns easily around about, limited access, improving the flow of traffic.
Right. And I think a, after we're done here, we can kind of circle back to that and talk about how, why that might make sense on Bethel to have kind of a hybrid solution. I think it was our middle option. We showed a couple of slides back where you might have a combination.
So I was just going to show you a different condition. I mean, if you have just, have all the answers, just ask.
That one's hanging next to us a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And so I think this is the last one of our discussion topics? Almost. So bike facilities, um, per city standards, both of the corridors would be designed to accommodate bikes. Um, and it seems like on Bethel, the, so the best solution, as it's more of a, um, city street with, you know, a neighbor, more of a, less highway-like feel than SR one sixty, the six-foot bike lanes on the, in the right-of-way seems like a great solution for Bethel. On Sedgwick, where you, oh, I should note that both of the facilities are thirty-five miles per hour, which I was actually kind of surprised by, um, Sedgwick being thirty-five miles per hour. It seems like a street, uh, corridor that you could travel much faster on if you wanted to. Um, but, uh, that, that kind of gives you a sense of what it's like to travel as a bicyclist if the cars are going thirty-five miles an hour versus going fifty miles an hour or sixty miles an hour. So, um, Sedgwick is going, it's probably going to be a wider profile with more truck traffic and it has a fairly steep grade coming out of the, um, SR sixteen interchange. Um, so we feel like if it was a bike lane only option, more experienced cyclists might be comfortable dr, riding in that facility, but someone who's not as experienced might not feel comfortable in that facility. So another option would be providing, um, a shared use path on both sides of the street, um, where you combine the sidewalk and the bike, um, lane basically. It's, and the, this is per WashDOT standards, it's a fourteen-foot width, ten feet wide, two-foot buff, buffer on either side. And then you have a planting strip for drain, for stormwater and also buffer, buffering from traffic. And then a minimum shoulder of two feet, um, which is actually, if, if someone is very experienced and they don't want to ride on a shared path because it's out of the way or, um, it's full of pedestrians or whatever, then, um, the two-foot shoulder might be too narrow. So you, we might want to make that wider to accommodate people who are very experienced bicyclists. Um, but if this is just a minimum width, then, um, you add four feet of right-of-way to the profile of the road if you do a shared use path versus bike lanes. So these are things to consider in terms of what do we want? What do we want Sedgwick to look like and how do we want people to use it and?
So you, you would, you would perhaps go with A and then migrate to B for the hilly portion of that and then go back to A?
Um, that's an option. We hadn't, I hadn't considered that. I was just considering the whole stretch being a shared use path.
I know, I mean, she can ride a bicycle. Walking alongside her would be dope.
I mean, I was pretty opinionated when we had this discussion internally and based on my conversations with, uh, two very vocal bicyclists that attend our meetings regularly, um, when we were, uh, developing the baser pedestrian path, we thought, oh, they would never ride on the baser pedestrian path because they don't want to be their, their intermediate skilled expert bicyclist and they don't want to have to dodge strollers and things. So they're, they're just going to want to have a five-foot bike lane and that, or a six-foot bike lane, that's it. And so I, I guess I don't see the need to have both a bike lane and some sort of a shared path. When I think our sidewalk section typical is about six feet or ten feet?
Eight.
Eight? So you got eight foot. So that allows your expert bicyclists that can either be in the road, traveled way, or in the bike lane. And then those less daring, they can just be on an eight-foot sidewalk where there's no issue.
Are these supposed to be on an eight-foot sidewalk?
What's that?
Are they supposed to be using the sidewalk?
They can, they can still use a sidewalk. Yeah. When we designed Tremont, we designed it for three conditions. So you've got, you know, kids that, and people that just feel comfortable being on the sidewalk with their bikes, or they can be in the bike lane and then they get off the bike lane at, at the roundabouts, or those bicyclists that stay in the traveled way and go through the roundabout in the lane. But yeah, I, we don't prohibit bicycle, bicycles from sidewalks.
And, I mean, today you wouldn't expect there to be a ton of pedestrians on Sedgwick. And I think in the future, it's possible that there still won't be a ton of pedestrians on Sedgwick. So there's, um, you know, the opportunity to share a narrow facility.
So you can see a lot more people walking, but I do bicycles like that.
So that, those are some of the things that we're going to take our best guess at what we think the, the right solution for these, but we're going to be coming back to you, you know, in the future and get your input on some of those specifics and say, this is what we thought made sense in working with your staff, but we need you to confirm that and validate that for us. Some of these issues, um, will be based on our guess at what type of user is going to use the facility predominantly. There's always going to be an exception to the rule. You're going to say, well, my brother-in-law bikes up and down that corridor, but maybe he's only one of ten people. Um, so we've, we've got to kind of set priorities based on that. And what we find in certain places like Sedgwick, um, where it seems like, well, it'd be great to accommodate all different types of users, but the, the fact is nobody's taking their four-year-old out with his training wheels on that stretcher road. That's not where they're going to be riding. So we don't necessarily need to accommodate them there. But maybe if Bethel has an area that's more walkable and it's got more restaurants and little shops, that might be where they get home from work and then take the kids out and say, we're going to ride the bikes down here.
Can you go to balance? Um, one developer mentioned this back and I went out to a car and, and Ramsey, you know, those parallel streets along Bethel, you know, Ramsey and there's another one on Lincoln. Could we make our baser pedestrian path along there?
Right.
And let Bethel out that, build out that way versus trying to compete with the cars out of that?
Yeah, I, I, I can see where you're going with that. Um, we're doing a project just like that in Chelan actually, um, because they, they have pretty wide right-of-way, but when they finally get their landscaping and their parking and enough lanes in, they've run out of right-of-way to accommodate pedestrians and bikes the way they want. So we've separated their, um, facilities so they'll have parallel routes. One that's more vehicle focused and one a block over that provides better pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And then the traffic's slower and lower volumes on that street too, so it's safer. The challenge you have that, they've got an incredible grid system developed there and yours is pretty limited. You've got the main corridors and then you don't have alternate routes a block or two away that go that full distance. So that, that would be a challenge with that approach.
And then the final slide we have is on project prioritization, thinking about what, what projects need to happen first. And you can kind of, looking at the operations of things, where are things breaking first and where do we need to address those first as well as we've done, this is just a real quick heat map of where the collisions have been on both corridors in the last five years. Um, and so you can kind of get a sense of where, um, the investments need to be made first. Uh, the Lincoln and Bethel intersection in terms of operations is a high, um, priority because of the way that that intersection, um, operates. It has, you know, a pretty heavy Vaughn coming down Mitchell and they, right now it's a, it's a Y-intersection and it's very difficult to make a turn onto Bethel from that road. And the proposal that we're, um, we have on the table would, would help that a lot. Um, the Salmon Berry and Bethel Road intersection, um, you can see a, a little heat area there for collisions and as well, it's, it's going to need some sort of control. It's the only major intersection on the corridor that doesn't have control right now. The Valier Court Connector, we have a lot of collisions at Lund and it's very congested during the peak hours. And that is what would provide that kind of release valve on, on the nor, uh, southwest quadrant to kind of avoid that intersection if you don't need to use it. Sedgwick corridor widening and access management, you can see the collisions that are just up and down this portion of Sedgwick and access management would help with that a lot. Um, and as Eric said, as development starts to come in there, setting up the expectation of what access is going to be allowed and, um, you know, setting the framework for, for a safer corridor. And then it's also important to think about what project can be kind of developer-led as opposed to city-led. Um, so the Salmon Berry and Blueberry, um, the alternate grid network off to the side in this area where there's development happening, the intersection controls at those locations, they could be tied to development. Um, the Sedgwick intersections, um, building those out could be help, the, um, developers could help with that kind of improvement. And then there's a parcel of land over on, uh, where Walmart is and connecting a, a side network there. I think you can see it here. Um, uh, another alternative route, um, do that parcel. If that parcel gets developed and knowing that, that developer has to accommodate that kind of connector, that would be really helpful. So yeah, so.
And that's the Cathy, the extension of Cathy that goes from one along the east side of Safeway. And, and that was a project that had been established when Home Depot was going and has fallen to the wayside at this point. And it's not really the best route because Walmart didn't want a freeway in front of their, between their parking lot and their building. So the route actually goes over by Wendy's and then it comes back. And so, I mean, it's an alternate at some point to look at if, if that Home Depot property develops, we'll certainly pursue that circuitous, you know, parallel route.
Right. But it doesn't necessarily have to be a city-initiated project because of prior, for priority reasons. So this is just a, looking back at all the different pieces and all the things we talked about and hopefully you have a better sense of the trade-offs. And, um, if you have any further input on what kind of streets you're looking to build or what kind of intersections, you know, you hope to see or bike facilities you hope to see, then that, that would be helpful for us.
Mr. Murray, I, may I comment? I went to a workshop down in Tacoma last summer and I can't remember the name of the, um, organization that presented, but it was basically comparing your three-lane highway to your five lane, which would be Bethel. And when I got through with the workshop, there was no doubt in my mind that I would like to see a, a three-lane urban-type, um, street. It allows more for, um, a neighborhood feel, being able to cross is easier. And the statistics they showed us that day, it actually, um, was better for businesses and people getting in and out of their businesses. And for myself, I, I drive down Bridgeport frequently and I go to Chambers Bay Golf Course frequently. And the, um, the roundabouts, when you're down on whatever the name of the street is that fronts Chambers Bay Golf Course, you go through three, uh, roundabouts down there. And it's, you know, it doesn't have the traffic that Bethel does, but it's not, um, it's very manageable. And it does, um, manage the access in and out of the developments on the other side, the home, the housing developments on the other side. So I feel very strongly that I would like to see the three-lane road rather than a five-lane road in there.
I'd kind of like that too. What would not want to take off the table, the intersection improvements, maybe four lanes?
At the big one, at the major.
I agree. I, I prefer the three-lane. I think the three-lane is certainly solved traffic now. Um, I don't know from a twenty years' span how.
I'd want to recreate the way.
But additional data will be important too. We, we expert that that data, it's critical just to, you know, they all have probably drawbacks and benefits and if you're going to come back and share with us, if you do this, then expect this, but if you do this, then expect that.
What's, what's staff's argument?
I, I think the, you know, the first thing that was mentioned, which I don't want to gloss over, has to do with those county-owned properties. And if the city is required to build on any of those properties, that portion of the project is not going to be able to be federalized, I think is the conclusion that we've come to.
No, the conclusion is unless we can go back to the person or persons that were purchased from originally and get a statement that says that they were treated fairly and blah, 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 then we, we can't. But if they passed and we can't get a hold of them, then they're basically hands-off or any federalized portion. So that means we would end up doing these as non, you know, maybe they're TIB, but even with TIB, you have to follow a Uniform Location Act now. So really those might just be city projects. So I think we're going to attempt at some point when we hone in a little bit more, we, we may need to go through a process with Kitsap County to, to see if we can at least have conversations through this third-party acquisition conversation, um, to pass the certification review for those parcels.
Is that something that we've been called or do we?
We, when we reached out initially, this all started with the advanced acquisition conversation that I know that we've had in the past. And so I reached out to WashDOT local programs, um, working with Don Fletcher. She ultimately reached out to Kitsap County and then we obtained the map that is in this packet that showed the properties that were acquired for the project. We went through a pretty exhaustive study of files. We actually talked to FHWA to see, well, if it was the county project versus the city project, we had that conversation. And ultimately after conversations with FHWA, uh, we were directed And ultimately after conversations with FHWA, uh, we were directed by Wash Dot to stay clear of those properties unless we could get some sort of documentation with the prior owner.
Does it make money that the county, it was in the county, it wasn't in the city when the county purchased it? The county screwed up and now we're paying the price. Doesn't seem quite right, so.
Yeah, we, we went down pretty much every avenue. The other thing we haven't attempted to date is to actually go back and contact the owners that the county bought the properties from. But we will be.
Yeah, so, so I guess the question was the three or five as a recommendation. And I think solely based on cost and, uh, the fact that portions of this project may have to be entirely city funded versus federally funded. And portions may be federally funded where these county projects wouldn't be included. I think that, um, you know, it's a decision about cost more than anything and also funding sources.
But it's also, we went on that tour and, you know, I think what Eric was arguing to, um, you know, build it. They will come. Well, you don't necessarily want them to come at those peak levels. So, you develop a corridor that achieves what you want. It moves traffic, but it's also pedestrian friendly. And it's an environment that people are gonna wanna go. And so, some of the pass through traffic, uh, doesn't pass through. They find an alternate route. And so, I would like to see a three lane complete street on Bethel and the five lane from sixteen to, uh, you know, Fred Meyer. And then taper into the county section as a general, I think that would be our best starting point.
I also wanted to add that the three lane profile and the intersections being built out to accommodate the forecasted volumes, you could maybe acquire the right of way for that to happen. But you wouldn't necessarily need to build it that, you know, you could wait till traffic becomes a real problem to actually build that, that larger intersection or that larger roundabout with a larger footprint. Because, you know, they're forecasted volumes and twenty years from now is a while from now. And that's just an option to think about too. Cause you don't wanna.
Root funding wouldn't be an issue doing that, buying those forecasted properties? Could you get away with buying additional right of way using state or federal funds?
As long as you follow the Uniform Relocation Act.
And they wouldn't necessarily be developing it today.
Well, with using those dollars, don't you start to buy?
I think, well, that's a learned experience. We require right of way design for our own line and then deal with federal lines. We don't, we want right of way ahead of their own line.
Three lane profile, essentially a left turn lane, no no.
It depends on how you wanna control your access. So, it's either a left turn lane or a median.
Right, it'd be a combination.
Well, that's what I was thinking, actually, improved by the concept of looped access. If you did model, you know, what traffic flow would be with a left turn lane versus, you know, restricted access for the roundabouts.
Well, I think our current model, we've tried to take it to kind of the worst case scenario in terms of traffic flow, which means we had a completely access control through the middle. And everybody has to do U turns at the intersection.
It pushes everyone to the intersection. We don't have, the model doesn't have the granular detail of all the driveways and, um, all the different access points that it has.
Why maybe they can eliminate the left turn lanes if you, if you keep it down to the center? That's why I think it's a longer access.
And that's what we were looking at.
Make everybody go with the roundabout or impact and make right out holdings.
So, in terms of traffic modeling, it's kind of the worst case scenario. Everybody has to go through the intersection and there's no mid block turns. So, that's what we've got in modeling that right now. And then my guess is, I mean, I think we were already heading in the direction I'm sensing from the council. We haven't tried to make it. Well, this is the way it's gonna go because we still have some public outreach to do. So, we don't wanna be presumptuous and say, well, we've already figured it out, but go ahead and weigh in. So, we wanna get that input. But I think it looks like a three lane section would work. It will have trade offs without a doubt. And there will be certain elements of corridor that have to accommodate things like the U turns. So, um, it won't be three lane everywhere. There'll be a couple key locations that will be wider. But, um, I think that's the kind of, um, character you're gonna see on Bethel. It sounds like that's what you're wanting. Definitely more of an urban feel. It'll be slower. It won't be the greatest commuter route. But it doesn't look like that's what that's supposed to be. Sedwick will be a little better for commuters, um, less inviting for pedestrians. And that seems more in line with the character of that corridor, so that's kind of what we're seeing right now.
Quite honestly, Jackson is a, I took that today, just coming back from Fred Meyer. Off over Jackson, came down, this eight bypass, so it added just a couple minutes and, you know.
I pictured Gig Harbor that, you know, that is that I use a lot. And so, some of that, you know, I'm getting a feel for what that would be like just by, I'm bringing them.
Right, right.
Green Harbor has connected some of its uptown downtown with shuttles. So, you know, kind of picturing the future and, um, that's very appealing. It really is. That's slower traffic, um, safer. I think that's huge. And scenic, I think that's what we've been after. The discussion is. So, if it works, I agree with that. Bethel's such a.
Yeah, I had a couple questions. No, no, I'm not gonna pound the table. One of my questions already answered. From a time perspective and cost perspective, three to five lanes, is there really a tremendous impact on time with construction? Three to five lanes and also cost of going three to five lanes?
Um, well, the three lanes would definitely be a less expensive option, less property. And, um, you wouldn't need the wider pavement, which requires more stormwater management. So, three lane can be a lot better in that sense. It's also better because we don't have to go as far into the parcels on either side. So, we're not having to deal with driveways as much. You know, every time we touch a driveway, we have to reconstruct it. There's a lot of driveways. So, you can stay closer to the center line of the road. We have to chase things back less.
Yeah, I think if they, the increase in cost between a three lane and a five lane is significant with right of way, storm drainage, um, either walls or slow easements, which you have to purchase, driveway reconstruction, um, it'll, it gets significant.
So, it's not just like three to five would be like forty percent, it's like it could be significantly higher.
Yes, could be significantly higher.
I, I think in our current tip, we, we listed like thirty-three million dollars for the Bethel project. And that was based on the assumption of a three lane road. And I think the county estimates were closer to fifty, fifty something million.
Fifty years ago.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, those are the kinds of numbers you're talking.
I guess I would say, I was gonna say, if we can say the lines and I'd like to see us do some transit priorities so that we can be granted attractive, your shuttle concept is one way of keeping that a track.
Yeah, I think the access or the access management slash intersection control are really gonna be probably the most difficult to kind of fare it out. Once we establish a section, then you've gotta look at, just like we're gonna be doing on Tremont. Once those around, as soon as we get those roundabouts and Tremont's ready to open, we'll already have Kitsap County in line to do a corridor study, um, just a signal study. Look at the timing at Sidney and the timing at Port Arthur Boulevard. And we'll, you know, that's literally like a week's worth of work. But we're gonna wanna look at what we have to do to adjust those signals to not have an impact on the.
Can have the signal backup in the roundabout.
Right, so it's the same concept is, you know, it may be that because you really don't wanna put a, I mean, we all know about the roundabout in Gig Harbor at the base of Oregon. They've made it a lot better with the slip lanes so that they've kind of created now kind of this four leg, two lane. So, it's very manageable now. You theoretically could have a roundabout at Lund and at Sedwick. It would be two lane, four leg, um, and I wouldn't throw that out as not being feasible.
On and Sedwick.
I mean, Sedwick, uh, Sedwick, it would be, it would be like that one in Gig Harbor. I mean, it would be, it would be moving cars.
It would be different, so.
Two different.
You've got six entries into that roundabout as opposed to four.
Yeah, they, they, they improved things when they did those slip lanes.
They did.
So, I guess what I'm saying, kind of from a magnitude standpoint, both Lund, Lund Bethel and Sedwick Bethel would have that feel if you went roundabout. The benefit of roundabouts through the corridors now is all operating north, south as roundabouts. If you start having signals of roundabouts, that becomes more problematic. So, but I guess what I'm suggesting is if you do go over the roundabout at Salmon Berry and Lincoln, you may end up saying, we're just, at that point, we're gonna go all roundabouts around signals. Cause I think you're asking for trouble, kind of mixing and matching. I mean, that's just.
I'm writing before we're talking signals where the development is already kind of approached to the point where right of way is easily available.
Right, right. I mean, you could, yeah, you have three gas stations.
Three gas stations and Sedwick, you've got Lund intersections, we will build that all the way around it.
But it's built out for, you may have enough of an inscribed circle to actually put everything inside it. I just think we should look at that. And if we are gonna have a mix and match of signals and roundabouts, we've really gotta look at the timing on those signals.
Thank you. Anything else? I know these are your guys' committees, having, sadly, this process over twice. I've, myself, I've tried to create a chart here from the wall so she gets to screen up. My thought, so it's just one, before we even go to these committees, are we comfortable, or are you comfortable with the current meetings that you have between? They don't need to be between this time, are we, what I was proposing, I was gonna capture all of the others and that's just more than anything, just making everybody aware of all the outside responsibilities. Cause you may, it isn't always that everybody ends up with three assignments. Some end up with two, but even Beck who does most of the outside stuff, maybe she wants three more. I don't know, she already has a roundabout. Actually, on this one, she's got four. She's counting them here. So, my thought was, this list is based on seniority on the council. And I would have you guys make your first choice, go through for your second choice. And in a perfect world, and it never happens, all the boxes will get filled up the way you need to. Most likely it won't. And then I brought some ballot sheets and, uh, then you guys amongst yourselves will vote for some committees where we have more than three people that wanna be on committee.
I have questions about the committees that we have right now.
Sure.
We don't have a transportation committee and I don't know that we need one, but we just wanna handle that all right here.
Typically, it's under land use. This is where we take transportation stuff. And Fred's.
Public properties.
Yeah, so that one, yeah. The public property and land use.
A lot of studies, yeah.
This is where we've been taking those things. And Fred's expressed to me privately a, uh, public safety or more emergency preparedness. And it might be more of an ad hoc and, you know, something that the council member change. You know, I help them set up kind of like my homeless and, you know, it has maybe a life of its own. There are a number of people in our community that are very passionate about that. Frank Owen is one and some others that have contacted me. And Bainbridge Island has this great committee that involves the city council and.
Bainbridge Island has no committees.
They have standing committees, right, yeah. They're very, yeah, I looked for that. They have, they had three back in two thousand nine. And what Rob was talking about is I was, I was looking at committees and then I gave up because every city does them differently. And just because Fort Townsend does it a certain way, we don't necessarily wanna do that. But I did notice that Bainbridge, maybe they're the strangest one. Olympia has three committees, Paulsboro has seven, and we currently have seven. So, you can divide them up differently. And I've noticed that in our city, we've also evolved so much because tourism became economic development tourism. We used to have public property, which became land use. And what I was thinking was, what I felt we were missing, and I was talking to Rob, is that we used to have a public safety committee, which would be law enforcement. But then also it could include maybe emergency management. And I was telling him maybe outreach, like having emergency notifications. This does not have to be a full fledged committee. I noticed that Paulsboro has one, their own public safety and legal committee. Actually, met only twice last year. So, I thought it was an interesting way that each city does it differently. I don't know if there's any other interests on council members in a public safety type of committee or maybe discussing the topics, but it doesn't have to be a regularly scheduled one. And I was at the brainstorming stage. I hadn't even thought about how it would be staff. Like which staff member would be there or if any.
Yeah, I know you don't want to be there. My pushback too here is I think, I don't wanna expand the number of committees that require staff involved. It's just, these guys, their plates are really cool.
I guess I would just ask what, what that emergency management committee would, what's their scope? Is it like day to day police activity type of safety or is it like emergency preparedness?
We don't have, we don't know, this body doesn't have.
Because that's what I was gonna say.
From a policy standpoint, there's nothing for us to do or we need to do with the police department, to be honest.
It's actually, you know, in all of our trainings over at Kitsap County, yeah, they actually have like kind of some ground rules, which is, you know, during this event, there's gonna be a room in which elected officials will stay in that room and not kind of be a part of the emergency preparedness. I mean, that's just like a ground rule. They don't want, there's some liabilities and things to have elected officials in the emergency operations center. So, I think, I know the mayors go through the training that might, might work.
The mayor of the town. One of the scenarios, when I was the mayor of the town, the mayor died.
But your role is really limited to public information, working with the PI, the public information officer, and not being in the room.
So, in other words, we're just part of the county's.
Well, no, we, we, from a staffing standpoint, you have every, every employee of the city is required to report. Now, if somebody lives in Bainbridge Island, they'll report to.
Our role in emergency management is more, I think, engaging with our citizens in preparedness. That, and I don't think it's.
It was a good idea.
There's nothing from a policy standpoint I don't need to do. And I think if there's a need, it's more of a, something more like homeless committee where it's.
Coordination type.
Yes, coordinating, yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, staff has the EOC expanding, contracting of an event. You know, your staff is actually, you know, required to report and we're getting ready to.
In the overall structure, our EOC is a subset of the county's EOC.
And the county subset of the state.
So, you know, we deal with what happens here in our boundaries, but we also report to the county.
Right, and the county coordinates with the state. So, that structure's in place. In fact, we're, we're getting ready to open our new EOC. We've moved officially now up to three five on Tremont. And we're gonna, we're gonna open it up and turn everything on. And we've got the ham radios up and down, the phones, computers. I'm pretty excited.
I like the idea of at least talking more about the community ad hoc version of this. There does seem to be a gap between what we talk about and what our neighbors talk about. It's a basic value.
And I would agree that there's probably a need for an ad hoc. And then there's a citizens group that, you know, maybe has some council involvement. And council members wanna be involved in that.
No, no fixed tenets, I guess.
Yeah.
Nor- Just wanna comment, as I look at all of the, you know, committees and the functions of the committees, and how it relates to what these council members should be focused on, the policy and ad, I've always been a little bit confused, and I do buy our role with a formal Chimes and Lights Committee, to be honest with you. It's an incredible event for a community, and we never want that to stop, but just from a council's engagement with something like that, from a festival perspective, it's never quite. And it's never resonated with, like, the other committees, just to throw out there. No recommendation, but that's the one that just seems odd.
It is odd. It is different.
Almost like an ad hoc committee or something, but a standing committee just seems a little odd.
Thing is, it has nineteen years, can't hear you.
John can speak to this actually better than I can, although, um, I've been involved with this for quite a while now, and it doesn't quite fit. And in fact, I was going to say that the description for the Festival of Times in Life doesn't fit. I don't, it's incomplete. So, that's something we do need to work on, and, um, you know, how does that look? We talked about perhaps having a city event organizer at one point. That was a discussion Finance had back a couple of years ago, maybe. And I know there was a discussion about like thirty-five thousand dollars or something being set aside, that never passed. But, you know, that is something that I'm just telling you, I'm hugely involved in. That's just one of two binders, the other one's almost twice that size. To give you an idea of my personal involvement and our committee, we meet a lot and regularly, and so, that, that's something, as a council, we have to work on, because it's, it's a tremendous amount of work, and there's not, um, though various departments have taken it on, there's not enough staff to do all the work that's required. Yeah, I would say it's in transition.
Well, it, it's interesting, because initially, um, the whole thing started with Citizens Committee, and it was time, maybe that was established to celebrate the grand opening of this building. And in our fundraising effort that we had for it, when we had all done the party, we had funds left over, and the Citizens Committee fought the chimes for the clock tower. And it was about the time of Christmas, and we had still money left over, and we thought, why not kinda celebrate the turning on of the chimes with the old-fashioned Christmas, you know, community? That's what started the whole thing, and then it got transitioned into the city, and I guess it was because I, I was chair of the grand opening celebration committee at the time. And, you know, I was on the council, and this kinda stayed in that role of organizing and visiting, we had, and it was because of the call city hall. You know, the city hall property, and a lot of city hall staff, that it became part of the city council function. And that's how it kinda transitioned from citizens to the city council, and it's kinda how it's been called over the years, so. But it's a good extension of it. There's a lot of aspects that the city directly involved in. City street, that we put decorations over. Obviously, city property here that we decorated, put the tree up. Whether we wanna continue that or not, is, you know, it's kinda, how it can be called.
It's an anomaly, it typically doesn't have council members on it, and L T A C. That we can only have one by the R C W, only has one.
The, the, the reason that it doesn't have is because others aren't interested in volunteering. There's no restrictions that say that it's only one. Fortunately, yes, I can like, fortunately, we have one that we had, that'd be the chair of L T A C and Chimes and Lights.
It is incredible that, that's not, you know, don't, don't stake that goal, it just doesn't need with the, with a policy standpoint, that's the one that stands out.
Right. It really does.
Okay, are we comfortable with what are the slate of what we have up there?
Does this, is the staff comfortable with that? Cause I know that we haven't had, should we say, robust economic development meetings. We've engaged the community to come and participate and part of it, but, um, city-led concerns or discussions has been minimal. So I guess my question is, do we need to continue that? Is there, in the future, going to be more?
Yeah, I, I think most of the issues that are brought forward come from the community, and, you know, whether it's a special event, or, um-
Can we just combine that with land use again, and just make it, that's just one committee? Cause it kinda used to be that.
Well, we had-
Two committees, too.
We had two, we had, because the committee members were the same, they met back-to-back, and one was public properties and one was economic development.
I don't know that economic development and land use still exist.
No, they don't, they're not a part of it.
Isn't economic development in the L T A C meeting, or?
Well, easily, your L T A C could be part of, uh, well, it hasn't been that. Economic development, L T A C would fall underneath that, and one of the committee members is going to be the representative that, you know, runs the process back there, you draw straws, or however the committee decides to assign that work. That's, that's probably the most likely marriage I see up there, if you mind consolidating that.
Well, there's, there's a lot of assignments that many of the seven committees-
I know.
That have to coincide with seven council members. So each other's taking a little bit of pain.
Yeah, committee instead of that, no. And I heard something about street committee, too, that, I mean, and-
Oh, it used to be a lot.
Yeah, we used to have nine committees, I remember, right?
Yeah, we had, well, we may have at some point, but I know, we had a, a police committee and one public safety committee, we had that for years. That kinda went away when we dented to the fire, we got our fire department.
There's also a public safety in parks, um, which was part of the property. Other than this, our community development and, I think, so that economic development could fit in, and land use maybe that way.
I don't know, if you guys wanna leave it alone?
We could see if people wanna pitch in, or insist, like, if there's none, maybe we change that committee real quick.
Yeah, it's just a flow of preferences, so.
What, what I was kinda hoping to do is, I'm gonna take, I'd like to take care of the others first, and get, and I think primarily, there are, there are already committees that are out there. And Beck, I'm, I'm missing one, Beck's, Beck's got four right now, K R C C.
Rob, do those include the alternate assignments?
Uh, I'm gonna get to those.
Okay.
So Beck, Beck currently has K R C C, P S R C Transpall, uh, K R C C Transpall, and then the P R T O, P O, which is the transportation group up in Qualamette, Jefferson County, and multiple Masons.
It, it's, it's Mason, Jefferson, Qualamette, and gets out.
I didn't realize, and I didn't know I had an alternate, that Mr. Clausen was the alternate to the health board. I should, I should be missing some meetings, so the alternate could go.
No, 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 it's just not bigger.
He's, I, 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 this is from a couple of years ago's council resolution, that I pulled that out, so unless some, and I think part of why is, Mr. Clausen agreed to do that, is he's in Remerton, and that meeting happened to be on Super Tuesday, and, um, if the mayor got ill and couldn't be there, that he would cover that. So, Mr. Clausen is still willing to handle that, cause I don't think he's ever turned it before, so it's pretty likely.
Someone just might have, uh-
We have myself, D R C C Executive Board as an alternate. We have Mr. Deener is the P S R C Growth Management Alternate currently, and hopefully you're still willing to do that. So we'll put you there. We have Cindy is the K I D A, K I D A, um, are you still on that?
I am.
You still are? And it looks like Scott is the alternate for that.
That's a lot of waste stuff.
And there's, yeah, there's a lot of stuff here. So, there's two, and we'll assume that these happen, um, there's a P S R C, uh, committee, what is the one for Sean, the Sean's name?
The, um, economic development.
Development is the alternate. So we'll assume Sean got on, he gets, uh, confirmed for that, and Jay was nominated for the P S R C, um-
It was Transpall, I was talking to you about that, the two, and I don't know if this is the proper form, but K R C C had a Transpall Committee, and they're developing a Plan Paul Committee.
Right.
Now, I go to all of the Transpall things. I would like to see our mayor join me at those, plus an alternate. We're the only jurisdiction there that has only one representative.
And I'm, and I'm willing to do that. The other piece, did you get an enclosure on here, whether Plan Paul is an option for you?
It's not an option.
It is an option, and I stand, so I will attend the Plan Paul. There's an opportunity for a council member for the Plan, the K R C C Planning Level meeting. If anybody's dying, uh, toward that.
What happened to your teeth?
I'm not-
You're not going.
I'm not, I'm not dying to go to that, but Transpall and Plan Paul are gonna be back-to-back, and so-
So you might lean on me for Transpall, and I might lean on you for Plan Paul.
Yeah.
And we can cry together on it. All right, so that, that is the other committee, the outside agency stuff, and Randy's taking copious notes over there.
So where do we throw my name into the outside?
You know, there was something I thought for P S R C.
It's K R C C, and it's my, it's the alternate to the K R C C.
Okay, it's an alternate.
It's a, yeah.
Is it K R C C Transpall?
I thought P S R C.
Board.
It's the board.
Board.
Okay. Uh, so that's Jay here, is the alternate for Beck for K R C C, it's the board, for the board?
Many feel that it's the board, and some don't.
Okay. So now we're going to go to the actual, our actual committees themselves. So is everybody comfortable with their assignments over here?
There was one here that's listed as P S R C E E D.
That's the one, Sean, Sean's been nominated for that, cause he works over in Seattle, and he's an alternate, he won't have to go all the time. So, what I'm gonna ask, we, everybody gets to go around once, we could end up with more than one, you know, there'd be tick marks in a box, so don't be bashful, if you really wanna be someplace, and then we'll, you know.
You're picking one number one right now.
And you're getting, Mr. Clausen, you are the longest tenured council member, so you get to go first.
I'm in.
You're on finance. And Mr. Chang, you're the member two.
How are you?
Wrong one.
Yeah.
Chang.
We got one, then he's next, or do we two?
Yeah, I don't like, you just put two of them against my names, like, we're gonna, I only get one vote.
Finance.
Finance, we're gonna fill out the finance. Councilor Ashby.
Finance.
Finance committee. Okay, well, let's figure this one out first, and then we'll move on. Now, so, Mr. Gitchardi, finance. Mr. Deener?
I wanna say finance, but I'm not going to.
Okay.
I'm gonna say maybe it's-
Land use, okay. Okay, Mr. Rosa Pepe?
Show me the money, finance.
Okay, so I think we just gotta solve this logjam first. Everybody in the room is gonna get three votes on a piece of paper, and write three council members' names on it. Hopefully, we don't have to-
I'm confused where it is, but the-
We can't throw these away, Randy has to collect them, cause they're-
It is, the voting paper is full of record, and I do have to say go, and they are disclosed for public purposes, so it's just FYI.
And Randy, if you wanna collect those, and then, um, I'm just gonna erase all of these, and we'll flip.
Yes.
And we'll start over.
When you're done, raise your hand off your charger. Like a school teacher.
You're trying to figure out that stuff. J O H.
I didn't see that on the list.
Okay, Randy, I'll knock it off.
Okay, so I have one for Clausen, Chang, and Ashby. Gitchardi, Ashby, Clausen. Clausen, Ashby, Rosa Pepe. Chang, Luca Relli, Rosa Pepe. Ashby, Clausen, Gitchardi. Clausen, Ashby, Gitchardi. Clausen, Ashby, Luca Relli. And that's all.
Okay. Looks like Charn, Ashby, and Clausen, and Gitchardi. Disagree with those goals?
We need to put a check, so we know what you're doing.
Yeah, okay, and so now the folks that didn't get their first choice, I think should get another bite of the apple here. Red.
Something like the land use.
Okay, and Cindy?
Utilities.
And-
Put the SAC down, just for your utility here.
Yeah, that's right, this is, this is also SAC.
Well, SAC's next to it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, this also involves, everybody, probably that, like, K.
Do you got a call?
I just wish that it-
You can just, just erase the line in between.
Yeah.
Or just put it here on one, or on the same side.
Yeah. Figure it out, too. There you go. Uh, this is, this is a marriage here.
It's not a good one.
So you've picked- Yeah, and Jay, where's Jay now?
You chose, well, you chose.
Okay.
And then put it in SAC also.
You're, yeah, you're also SAC. All right, everybody's got one, and a pair here, so we'll go back to Mr. Clausen.
You got two.
Yeah, I'm out two, huh? You chose.
Utilities. And you have SAC. So we have three, we're done with finance, obviously, and unless, uh-
Well, we may have to go.
We may have to go, if somebody between the twos on this, for this one over here, somebody else wants one. So, we're at Fred.
That's a utilities.
Okay, and Cindy?
Chimes and lights.
Chimes and lights.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ashby.
I was like, you were saying, um, I'll go ahead with the economic development.
Okay.
Just, I suppose we need to, this is supposed to get to it.
And Gitchardi?
I probably do economic development as well.
I don't do economic development.
Jay?
I can go up to go.
Okay. I have enough ballots, get some more paper?
Yep. Well, let's go through with our thirds, well, no, okay, I understand.
Yeah, we'll have to solve this, this one first, and then these. We have to solve this, this one first and then these.
Because whoever gets bounced then has to make another choice in the twos.
They're going to have. Someone's going to figure out two land uses. Is everybody going here just to party?
Two votes, you're going to.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody's going to vote here on Fred and John. You can Fred and John in utilities. Because these, this was the number one for these two votes. So you're only going to vote on this to break tie.
Economic development. I mean, I could move to another.
Okay.
Is that what you want to do?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, we're, we're, we'll get to that side of it. Right here, we're just trying to break this law. You've got four here in utilities. So these two, that was their number one. So you either write Chang or Clausen on your ballot.
Give my license out.
Any speeches or?
No, he was hacking him at that time. If you have to.
Yeah. I was just wondering, you know, speeches.
Okay. All right.
So Clausen? Chang? 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 Clausen?
I'm glad that my question's right.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clausen, you get a new number two.
I guess my.
Okay. And then is somebody of this group wanting to consider something? Is Sean you guys?
Well, I was going to, yeah, I was going to move the land use, but no, it doesn't do us any good. Would you rather do that? I'm happy to sit there. So he says erase him, I'll move over.
Okay, so Sean will go to two up here. Or was that?
Just favor of two.
Here.
And John, you still get a two.
He doesn't have a committee to go on.
Yeah.
Times and Lights.
I will pass. Oh, you're right. You're right.
I know what was the outcome on LTAC. Were we going to make it part of ED tourism? And then one of these three people, that committee needs to work out the, this committee?
I'll be glad to chair LTAC.
I like that.
So just move it to EDT though.
So it's, it's, it's within our, you're on that committee.
Yeah.
So that'll be for your committee to work out the LTAC process.
So those two go.
Now we just marry these two.
That's two different meetings or one meeting?
It's two different meetings.
You can only have one person.
You can only have one council member at this meeting.
Okay.
So basically, finance, land use, economic development, and utilities are built.
Yep. So it's, I'm sorry to say.
I, I put one.
Okay. That happens sometimes.
Yeah.
You have.
Well, that's how Cindy is too. She's taking on times and lights. Which is. You could, you could be involved in times and lights.
I could.
When you're eight.
I could.
From a distance, which always happened anyway.
I could.
What was that?
I don't know. So I'm checking now.
Well, would you be interested in being the alternate for KETA?
Sure. What, you know, what is it? I think it's different.
That takes one of the alternate assignments off. And I could stay, I would stay for a financial policy work.
Okay. So that sounds like. You, you tend to, you typically would go to the KETA.
Wow, I go to some.
You wouldn't be the, you wouldn't be the primary, but you might be the alternate.
That's fine.
Okay, so you've got another, another other. So did you capture that force trading that Randy?
I did. What was that?
So.
The KETA alternate. Cindy's, Cindy is the representative and the alternate now is John.
You hear it comes off.
Councilwoman Kita came on that. Right? We got there. Randy, did you capture the warning? We did quite well. John.
And then Fred might be the alternates for finance.
Words. All right.
He has to wait.
All right. We are to our next order of business, which is Comp Plan.
All right. As you probably remember, in December, I mentioned that we had moved our comprehensive plan application deadline to January 31st of 2018. And so the new Comp Plan cycle begins with any amendments that are submitted before that deadline. I mentioned that if any of you had any specific amendments that you would like to propose, to bring those forward. And so far, I have not received anything from you. I do have a list of three items which we may want to consider. And these would be, would require either the mayor or the council to sponsor them as city-initiated amendments. The first of these amendments that has come to our attention involves the Old Clifton Road Industrial Park. And there are several properties that are outside of the industrial park. And we've previously brought these to the council's attention because they are, I think there's 18 or 19 properties that are zoned industrial. But their access is off of Anderson Hill Road via a rural private access road. And so they don't currently have industrial access unless they either build a bridge from Old Clifton Road across the ravine in the creek to, to serve those properties. Or if a road is extended from the industrial park to the north into these properties. Even if those two things were to occur, the creek still divides this area in two. And so the, the proposal that we have now, and we've been talking to one of the three landowners in this area, is the purple shaded areas on the map that are to the east of the creek, which north is at the top of the page. The proposal would be to just bring those properties that abut Old Clifton Road from a industrial employment zone to a high-density residential zone to allow for some sort of apartment construction. The reason for this is that the cost of extending infrastructure to this area, combined with the critical area setbacks, really means that for this to develop, it has to be some sort of high-intensity use that's going to pencil on a pro forma for somebody. And.
So the backside of these properties, abut the blue line, the green line there, which is the creek?
The green line is the creek, correct. And so the creek essentially divides the zoning district as it's proposed. And we think that this is a reasonable solution in this area because we're not sure that we want industrial development with driveways directly onto Old Clifton there. We think that a more aesthetically pleasing, you know, landscape type setback would be potentially more attractive there. And so this is a, potentially a compromise because the, the owners who are on the east side of the creek also own some of the properties on the west side of the creek. And so this gives them some immediate development potential so that they can do something with some of the property while they wait for a solution to the road, which likely is going to be access coming from the city's industrial park or some sort of change at the county level on the existing private road there, which I don't think is very likely.
If I'm looking at this correctly. If this is a topographical map, it, it's pretty steep. The, the backside of that property is pretty steep.
Yes. And so to.
And going up on the west side is pretty steep, too.
Yeah, it's, it's a ravine. And getting utilities or vehicles across that ravine would require a substantial bridge. The alternative would be coming in. It's still going to require a considerable amount of grading. But we've, you know, we've had discussions about the possibility of doing something with city-owned property and, and putting in a road grade that would provide access to the, the back half of this industrial area, the west half, coming in from the north. And so that would, the ravine would remain in a natural condition, would be not crossed in any fashion with utilities or a roadway. And the utilities would instead come in from the north. So we think this is a reasonable solution that at least provides some relief to these property owners. Due to the timing of the amendment cycle, we've only talked to one of these three property owners. And so getting the other properties on board to initiate an application isn't feasible for this cycle. And so that's why we brought this forward as a city proposal. If this made sense from a city policy standpoint, you could sponsor this rather than waiting for an application to come in from the individual landowners. And so we wanted to gauge the interest in doing that and see if we should put together an application between now and the end of the month.
So if we did, moved, did this and made a part of our docket, we're still going to reach out?
They will get notified, yes.
They'll get notified, reach out to these property owners, and we can pull this.
Correct. Yeah. The, the one thing is, is we looked at this as an all or nothing situation. We don't want to, as you're driving out Old Clifton from 16, you don't want to go from industrial to multifamily residential, back to industrial. We think that at some point, there needs to be a break where it transitions to the rural use in the, outside of the city boundary there.
I love it. I really do. This does make a lot of sense. And this is such easy access to the highway, to have extremely high density there, extremely.
And, and possibly a park and ride, who knows?
Right.
Yeah.
Would Bootchlaw have their own driveway in Old Clifton?
Presumably, it would be managed in some fashion, but. Yeah, theoretically, they could.
So we want apartments with lots of driveways?
No, it would be, it would be one driveway to an apartment complex.
And they could share after.
Yeah.
Share because it'd make more sense. What's a current zone meaning?
Employment. Employment industrial. Yeah, given the character of the road there.
We've been dealing with this in the job for ten years. There's not a lot. They've tried to do a number of things. It seemed like a reasonable trade-off to lose a little bit of industrial park employment in exchange of making that powerful for development. Otherwise, it's just going to sit.
So I don't see any objections to bringing that forward as a council-initiated amendment? Okay. The next proposal, this one came from our code enforcement officer. It's Crawford Road, which is off of Bethel, near the Salmonberry-Bethel intersection. This is a, an area where, you know, 80% of the properties, give or take, have had some sort of code enforcement issue in recent years. The reason for that is because the properties are designated commercial. They're zoned commercial. And so all of these houses are non-conforming uses and nobody's willing to put money into maintaining a non-conforming use. They're waiting for something to come along and buy the whole area out. The problem is, is that there is so much commercial property in the corridor that does not have, you know, 12 houses and a private road tract on it where that private road would have to be acquired from all of the owners who access from that private road. This is going to be one of the last properties that is combined and purchased in the entire corridor if it were ever to change to, to commercial. So I, the thought is that if this goes back to single-family, at least for the next, you know, 15 or 20 years, as a conforming use for financing and, and improving properties, people might be willing to put more effort into maintaining these houses. So it's, you know, it, it deals with an immediate need. And maybe the long-term vision for this in the 50-year timeframe is that it would be commercial. But there's no need to designate it commercial today, at least that we can see.
I like this solution. I'm just concerned that if we encourage residential use, they may have a problem with their road. But it's a private road.
It's a private road. Yeah.
I would doubt it today. So I would concur.
No, it's an interesting.
I'm still.
There's one house there that's actually very nice. At 16 all the time. But the rest are exciting.
Okay, so I don't see any objection to bringing that one forward. The final amendment, which stems from the Bethel-Sedgwick corridor, one of the deliverables per that contract was a right-of-way acquisition plan. And as part of our design guidelines development, we are including provisions in the design guidelines that say that setbacks are going to be measured from the property line, except where the city has adopted a right-of-way acquisition plan. And that's because we don't want people building new structures today that meet the current property boundaries as opposed to the future property boundaries. And so where Bethel needs to be widened, we want to make sure that we're measuring from the future sidewalk area or property line rather than the current property line, which will ensure that a building is, doesn't need to be purchased and then demolished in order to make way for our project. And so this is going to be an evolving map as we go through the planning commission process. But at least we will apply, we'll put that in the queue to be considered as an amendment just to add that plan to the list of adopted plans by reference in our Comp Plan. And that will be for Sedgwick and Bethel. And probably will want to do the same for other streets in the future. So I wouldn't expect any objections, but I wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that.
Any other?
Yeah, did anyone else have any ideas or suggestions?
Is there any way that we would want to encourage residential on Bethel? In addition to the commercial residential. Is that a special zone?
Yeah, I think, you know, long-term, what I envisioned for our code, and we're, we're starting down the path of updating our zoning code, but we're trying to finish up other projects first. Mixed use is an allowed zone in the commercial zoning designation. So legislatively, as we tweak the zoning code, that's going to become permissible without changes to the comprehensive plan because we can zone, we can change something from general commercial to mixed use without amending the Comp Plan because it's all under the, the commercial framework. We may want to consider some properties for purely a residential designation. But I wouldn't want to do that without preparing the more coordinated sub-area plans, which is still on the to-do list.
Other ideas? How familiar are you with Sydney and business professional? Because it seems like it goes down to division and then it skips over division to division in Sydney. The northeast corner with the churches. They get their designation business professional? Because I'm wondering if we're leaving out some lots on that side of the street. Now, if you ever have a follow-up.
I, I remember having a discussion about the east side of Sydney and that that was not envisioned to be business professional. I feel like we had that conversation in recent years at, maybe at the Land Use Committee or, or one of the other committees. And I think we don't know that that necessarily makes sense. But that was the decision that was made previously in which the council seemed to want to honor because we had already, you know, had a little bit of a fight over that one at some point in our history before I arrived. But I'm, I'm open to it.
So we stopped the division? Okay. But did the church get a change in the designation? They seem to want some. They have, I think.
They, they approached us about it.
They approached us. Did they get it?
No, we, we did not initiate that amendment. So the, the other amendment that will appear on the docket, which always appears, is the six-year street plan, which we'll, we'll just put on the, the list as an amendment. And later this year, Mark will provide us the updated one, which will be in the final ordinance. Or Mike? Yes.
He has nothing to.
Mark's drinking from a fire hose lately. All right. We on to legal defense of officials and employees? We might need to. How would they direct this declaration?
Yeah?
All right. All right, so you will likely recall that this was a topic that we discussed at the October work-study session. And Councilmember Cuthbert, in particular, requested a couple of clarifications in 238060 regarding attorney's fees. One of which, and you'll see that all of these red changes are ones that you've seen before. It's the ones that are highlighted, the only ones we're talking about tonight. So he asked to, that the, the rates that would be reimbursed would be those of the primary city attorney. So I've added that. And then he, he asked for some, some language regarding if you're the city's prevailing party, how the city, how the attorney's fees would, would be handled. And so I wanted to make sure that we're all in agreement that this is the correct language. Is this what was intended? In the event the city has awarded attorney's fees as the prevailing party in any lawsuit, such award shall be retained by the city. Provided that, and, and I think that's, that was the main thing that was requested. such award shall be retained by the city, provided that, and, and I think that's, that was the main thing that was requested. And I think that I added this second part, which is part of the reason I wanted to bring this back to you. Provided that once the city, city's attorney's fees have been paid in full, if excess funds remain in the attorney fee award, such excess funds may be paid to the official or employee of this purpose, for the purpose of paying any attorney fee hourly charges in excess of the city attorney's hourly rate as set forth in subsection C above. So in, in the case that, that there's a, um, an additional attorney on, uh, where, a private. Hire, hire their own attorney. The city would get their money back first and if there's anything extra, they could go to pay their attorney's fees as well. So that was not something that was brought up. That was something that I added, so if you don't like that, it can come about that. I, I think it does. Otherwise you're, you're not sure what to do with the remaining funds, so. Not sure how often that would happen, but, so that's, that's one of the. No, I mean, that, that's the thing. I mean, it was just being. Right, exactly. Right. Right. The, the city, they, they have to seek that from the court, yeah. So, but we're, we're just making it clear that we're getting paid in full first in case, in case there's any dis, problem. Um, and then the other, uh, thing that I just, I noticed when I was going through this, that on, uh, section two-thirty-eight-one-ten, um, it talks about what happens if the city council decides that this is a covered issue and then later it turns out it's not. And then what happens when we determine that it's not and then it turns out that it is. And so, um, if, it's on subsection two, it's the section that says if the city determines that a claim, uh, does come within the provisions of this chapter and a court later determines that it does not, um, the original language said, "Then the city shall be reimbursed for costs or expenses incurred in obtaining the determination that such claim is not covered by the provisions of this chapter", which is a subsection of if, if other legal work had been done at that point, this doesn't address getting reimbursed for all that other legal work. So I added that, "And any other costs and attorney's fees associated with defending against the claim", just to make sure the city is completely reimbursed in case it's expended money and it turns out it was, should not have been expending such money. Uh, they are, they generally tend to be eligible for those expenses. There are some, some ways of getting around actually flying them out. I mean, it's always, I think, better to have somebody in person, face-to-face with you, but I think these days with, you know, Skyping and that sort of thing, you can have a pretty reliable deposition even if they're not sitting in the same room. So you could cut down on those costs by, by undertaking kind of that kind of thing. Then we would have to. That's true. That's true, yeah. And be, and beyond their attorney's fees, yeah.
Eighty-seven?
Waiting until then?
Yeah. Guy says we're moving back to the UK.
Well, it would be the official or employee. It doesn't say that. No, but that, I, that's not difficult language to add. I can certainly make that more clear. Right. I can do that. By someone. It is. So, yeah, it's up to the city council to determine whether they want to be involved in the confirmation of appointed officers. The city council does not have the authority to, um, to confirm removals. However, when it comes to contracts, if the city council is one that has a contracting authority, they have the right to weigh in on removal or, you know, discontinuance of that contract. Yeah. If you so desire. True. And, and if you wanted to extend that to, I know it was, there's some mention about the hearing examiner being, you know, possibly under such a contract and that would be, you know, something you could weigh in on as well. Exactly, right. And, and it does make sense that the city attorney in particular is representing the city rather than the city council or the mayor or the staff. Uh, and so it makes sense that those of you who, yeah, have, you know, some real input into, into this, uh, into this relationship would, would.
It's a contract, yeah, he's under contract.
He's under contract.
He is, he is under contract.
And so, I think if it's a contractual, then, you know, if it's under the contract, then I think it should be the council should weigh in. Yes. Yes, that's what I was going for. So contracts, issues here.
Okay. I have my direction then. Thank you.
Possibly beyond repair and, um, needs, uh, replaced. And so in the twenty eighteen slash twenty, no, excuse me, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen biennial budget, um, staff budgeted seven thousand dollars for, um, some sort of, um, replacement garlands. Um, uh, staff was tasked with getting quotes on how much it would cost to replace the garland, um, if we were just to replace it as-is, what would be the approximate cost, and it's coming in about nine to ten thousand dollars. So obviously over, over budget, um, and so staff's just looking, looking for direction as to if we want to purchase them at all, if we want to stick within this, just get the seven thousand dollars worth, which is about a little more than half, increase the budget. So, um, the chair of the committee, um, may have additional comments as well. So nine to ten thousand would replace the garland as-is. If you want additional accessories or reefs or bells or anything like that, it would be additional cost.
So this isn't just one year. The Public Works has been bitchy-patching, uh, the decorations together. It's many years. And we really have kind of reached a point where, um, I'm not sure if we can even put this up again. Did, did you run out of duct tape?
No, I think there's not a duct tape.
But there are even sets of lights bundled in there to make use of every possible, um, resource that we have. And, um, as you know, I've been quite strong about decorating the city, um, during the holidays. It adds so much and I even considered asking all of you if we would, as a council, uh, make a provision in our city that we would decorate irregardless of having the Chimes and Lights Festival. Because I think it draws so many people to this area. Maybe that's, I don't know, development. Um, we're one of the few cities that has such a beautiful display. I hear all the time that even the press makes note of it. Um, it draws a lot of people and it's good for the businesses and it really makes our little community shine, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so, um, as far as trying to find out about replacing it, um, the committee's been talking about this for a long time and the desire there is to replace as much as we can and we don't have to have bells and whistles. We can just, um, we wanted to have a little higher quality, not the plastic look, a little bit more like, um, I mean, um, ginning all my resources that I have collected. But it, it just has a nice, uh, pine look to it, um, and it would be easier and less time spent on personnel, which is a big cost, um, to just start working on getting these replaced. So I think our recommendation is, as, as the committee was discussing, Matt, Paul, Spock, and all the others, is to get as much as we can, um, formalized as we have. We have to go through our procurement procedure. So do we have to write up this, uh, do, what does that?
So if it's under seventy-five hundred, then we can do, um, the least, um, formal bid. So basically we can get some quotes and go with whomever. Um, if it is over fifteen thousand, then, so seventy-five hundred to fourteen thousand and ninety-nine whatever, then we can do more of a, um, we're required to have written quotes and then we can go with the cheapest or whoever we want to go with. And if it's over fifteen thousand, it is required to have a formal competitive bid. And then we have to determine, so that's just for purchasing the product. Then we have to determine if it qualifies as public work for when they install these, um, lights. Right. We're, we're assuming that it's our guys that's doing it. Um, in the past, it, it's been a mix, I believe. I think we had volunteer work.
We've always installed.
Okay, so it's the lift that we borrowed. Okay. The bucket. Wave cable. So, we just. We didn't go off of quality. We just went off of, this, this is the footage that we have. This is how many of the feet that we need, provide the quote, just so I can have an estimate of what the dollar range was. It came in nine to, we, one quote was nine thousand, the other one was ten thousand. So from there, we'll gauge to say, okay, what type of product are we looking for? Yeah. Possibly. Correct.
With the same quality that we have.
With the same quality that we have and we want.
That's all, those quotes are LED.
So what's, what's the difference in quality?
Well, it's just that some are actually made sort of plastic, sort of a plastic and it's fluffy. It looks like garbage trash, you know? And what we were going for is something that looked more like the real deal. And there were quite a few companies that could be competitive and, I mean, I, I don't think we've got to the point yet where we actually have salespeople coming in here who really want this project yet. And who would say, well, we'll give you this product for this amount of money. I don't think that's happened, has it, Brandy? You've just a general, how much would this cost?
Yes.
So it sounds like Brandy needs to get some quotes. You're gonna, at minimum, we're gonna need three thousand, maybe a little more than that if we step quality up potentially.
And we're gonna need some assurances from NOAA that that will meet with a, but.
Um, come on, I was gonna say, I agree with everything everyone said. I think it's a, it's an incredible entryway into our downtown corridor. Um, something like this qualify for LPA?
No.
And you know what? This was, this is a big, um, change for the committee anyway because we wanted to partner with the House of Downtown Groups to have lights that stay up all year round. You know, so there's a district in Tacoma that has that, transmission has one like that. And it really is very appealing. People like town. It's got a cool feel to it. Unfortunately, we don't have the infrastructure in place to do this because. Well, we didn't, and we really explored this. This was the direction we were headed. And now we're actually going back to, we had just decided not to do garlands. So we're back to wanting garlands again because we, we can't have this.
Till we have. I think we're gonna be.
Quite a few years out.
Seven, ten years with garlands.
Well, and that's where we're definitely back to, you know, because the other changes didn't come forward and won't for, for years. So something that makes it easy for Public Works to hang in and, uh, they won't have to put all this time into it. Um, and the LED lights don't have such a drawl. So all of that adds up to another beautiful holiday season.
Are we assuming the same configuration that is in the mass? Is, is it crisscrossing based on certain sections?
And again, Public Works has, it's limited what they do and yes, same thing.
I mean, we're, we're assuming the same, what are the, there's.
Uh, so my question, I, I agree with everybody said, you know, replace it all at once, not a piece, you know? Um, but my question is, so for educational standpoint, you know, NOAA figures out where the money's coming from? And then that budget number?
So we participate. So first Brandy's gonna give us some quotes. So we know what the dollar, we're asking what the delta is. And then NOAA's gotta identify some money to pay for it. And then they'll be part of, we'll do a handful of budget and second.
For example, sales tax is becoming a little bit better.
Right, yeah, so this, this is different, whatever hot company is identified, we're coming back. That's all I'm hoping for.
And it'll, and it'll be, our savings also in employee time and that's employee time benefits that we have to pay. So that actually will balance something. Especially when the lights go on, it's gorgeous down there.
All right, can I get to the order?
Through January.